It's waiting, it's waiting.
We need lottery parking.
Just waiting, just waiting. We need lottery parking. We all here, four o'clock on the high. At this point, I would like to read the, any person wishing to appeal any decision made to the planning board with respect to any matter, matter considered at such meeting will need a record of the proceedings and for the, and for the such purposes may need to ensure that a verbatim record of the proceeding is made. Which record includes the testimony and evidence upon which the appeal is to be based upon, based. For statute two eighty six point one oh five, persons with disabilities in requiring accommodations in order to participate in this meeting should contact the city clerk's office at three two nine zero one zero zero, at least twenty-four hours in advance to request accommodations. And now, we'll do the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Please stand. Mayor Hill, would you do the invocation, please? You all by our heads, they're probably coming for you right now. Asking you to watch over this board as they continue to make decisions that benefit all citizens of this community. We ask that all decisions be made with clarity and conviction and that they're done according to your will, Christ name we pray, amen.
Amen.
If you would join me for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now, at this time, we'll have a swearing in of the new planning board member, Caitlin E. Owens.
Caitlin, repeat after me. I'm Caitlin E. Owens.
I, Caitlin E. Owens.
A planning board appointee of the Palaca City Commission.
A planning board appointee of the Palaca City Commission.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully perform.
Do solemnly swear that I will, or then faithfully, that I, okay. That I will faithfully perform the duties of my appointed office.
And will support and honor to the best of my ability.
And will support and honor to the best of my ability.
As all the beliefs, vision, mission, policies, procedures.
Of all the belief, vision, mission, policies, procedures.
Codes of ethics and codes of conduct.
Codes of ethics and codes of conduct.
Of the City of Palaca Planning Board.
Of the City of Palaca Planning Board.
I hereby through this oath affirm that I will perform the duties of this public trust.
I hereby through this oath affirm that I will perform the duties of this public trust.
In a fair and equitable.
In a fair and equitable.
And ethical manner.
And ethical manner.
Defitting the dignity and responsibilities.
Defitting the dignity and responsibilities.
Of the office.
Of the office.
I'm gonna ask where you got that, Sonny, because I think that you're gonna have to get everybody else on the board to take the same oath, because I don't think anybody else has. That, we've already commented on that, city manager. We do not, we didn't know nothing about that.
Like little stepchildren.
Buddies, if you would call roll, please.
George Deloach is not present. Chase Barnes.
Here.
Don Rawls here. Earl Wallace.
Here.
Ed Killibrue.
Here.
Edie Wilson.
Here.
Jamila Theobald.
Not present.
Reno Fells.
Not present.
Caitlin E. Owens.
Here.
That is the roll call at this time.
Thank you. I'd just like to take this time also just to ask everybody that's around and out there listening to us that keep George, our chairman, George Deloach, in prayers as he's out sick right now.
Mr. Chairman, at this time, if I could, I'd also like to make an introduction.
Yes, sir.
Right here, we have with us today our new planning director for the City of Palaca, Ms. Bernadette Fisher. She's seated at the end here, so she's come to us with quite a bit of experience in the field of planning and zoning. About half of that time in the public sector and about half of that time in the private sector, which was very interesting indeed. So we have somebody who had some experience from the private side, who has dealt with the public side from a, from the side of citizen and landowner and, and developer, so she's had both sides of the equation. She comes to us from central Florida, new to our area, and we're really pleased to have her.
Welcome.
Welcome, nice to meet you. Now, I would ask for the, the motion for approval minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
September seventeenth, is that what we're reviewing?
I'm sorry. Yeah, approval minutes for the special call meetings on September the seventeenth for the planning board.
I'll second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Now, I'd like to take this time to open the meeting to the public, for public comments. Public comments are available in person or by calling in at three eight six, three two nine, zero one, zero zero, extension zero, or by using the, the YouTube live chat features. Speakers, please limit your time to three minutes.
Got two calls on the line already, you've got one in the chat. So, all you have to do in order to get those calls is just.
Press one?
Press, just press the line, that's, that's flashing.
Okay. You're live, you have a comment?
Yes.
My name's John Vogt, two twenty South Fourth Street. As a reference to PB two zero dash zero four, changing this municipal code. We already have a process available to homeowners to address these potential changes. It's totally on a case by case request, and historic districts started approval to a store before for certificate appropriateness. And through the permit process and you have to, the zoning board of appeals, if someone's circumvent, circumvented these procedures in hopes of big forgiveness instead of ask permission, I'm sorry. I don't think the, the City of Palaca has the time, money, or waste on something we already have in place. And that will wrap it up, and I appreciate your time.
Thanks so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Could you give me your name and your address, please?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm, I'm watching your Zoom and I'm behind, I guess, on what's showing there, but no, you're red for me. Um, I want to thank all of you for your presence today and service to the benefit of the city. I'm Pam Garrett, I live in Flagler County. My family has owned commercial property in the city of one ten highway nineteen south since nineteen seventy seven. I previously lived at six oh three Emmett Street in South Historic District for three years, which my family purchased in nineteen ninety one. My mother and father restored it to its current uses of B and B at the Grand Avenue, but it currently owns and purchased it in two thousand sixteen. I have followed written, and written emails to Mr. Holmes and talked with him about parking code enforcement issues during August and September of two thousand twenty. And I've copied other city employees responsible for the code enforcement. I'm speaking, I'm gonna stop here a second for my own speech. I'm addressing more specifically this code change or new code for the parking in the historic areas. And I will continue, so I'll give you that little bit of background. I was born and raised in Palaca and always seek resolution that presents it in its best light. Citizens should realize that prospective property owners and businesses are not coming to see strip malls or seek the hottest shopping in North Florida. They are coming to protect it, its unique river beauty, terrain, historic treasures, and friendly people. Unfortunately, property owners in historic areas report that prospective buyers come through looking to purchase one of the historic homes, but leave a call to the lack of code enforcement and light concerning these irreplaceable historic treasures. I have researched what is usual in customer practices in progressive cities seeking renewal and preservation of their historic areas and districts. Where residential parking is needed in their historic areas by homeowners or guests, it is addressed by allowing parking on the street along the curb. Parking is not aesthetically pleasing or allowed on the right of way being grassy area between the curb and sidewalk. Concrete parking pads are not allowed in front of homes. Examples of best practice, parking in historic districts can be seen in the nation's oldest cities in North Florida. Another issue that comes to mind that I've witnessed in South Historic District specifically is vehicles, boats, skiffs, et cetera, parked in the front yards of historic homes. This is an extremely offensive practice. Code should not allow the parking of such or work vehicles on residential property or the right of way. The owners of such work and recreational vehicles should be required to unparking and storage in an appropriate facility. This is an extremely offensive practice. Such occurrences present Palaca in the worst manner and a list of negative views and comments from many visitors and those seeking to buy historic or other properties. Residents of the historic area give witness to these negative comments by visitors who summarily nect it. With these code enforcement issues and not performing accepted parking practices, Palaca will never be viewed in a positive light regarding the presentation of its historic resources. A city's lack of action to renew these resources speaks loudly to all that is not important to its leadership and citizens who will not speak up. With the best practices concerning parking U lines, Palaca would become a more walker-friendly city in all areas, especially the historic areas and districts. This would enhance the great amount of money and time that is about to be spent on revitalizing St. John's Avenue in the downtown city core to make it more walker-friendly. I would strongly implore all of you on this board and city officials involved with zoning or coverage issues to read the guidelines for residential new construction and historic districts by the Secretary of the Interior, standards for historic preservation and redevelopment. These guidelines are the bible for best practices in a city like Palaca, whose real treasure is in its historic resources. As they said on the current webinar, this is the money for downtown Palaca. There are many aspects to the best practices of historic preservation. All boards and city officials absolutely need to research and understand the best practices advocated by the Secretary of the Interior of the United States, and they need to apply them as they are in the greatest historic cities of America. Palaca must aspire to be one of those cities. When you're generous, give the climate effort, this can be accomplished, visible, and appreciated by all who live, visit, and come to invest in its bright future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett.
There's a call on line one.
You're live, you've got comments for the playing board?
Yeah.
Name and address?
I'm sorry?
Name and address, please?
Um, actually, I'm leaving it, my comment on YouTube online. So if you could just read those off, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The comments at this time.
There's a few comments on YouTube right now, I believe from Mr. Harwell. Um, he has several on here, actually. Uh, first one being, I believe this change was prompted by the property owners in the South Historic District by being given the impression that they can have parking pads in the R O W. Uh, this was during the new storm water system and the reconfiguration of the streets. The historic districts and the other residential districts and town have all been functioning with no issues. Requiring to the South Historic District, the parking was never a problem until someone was giving the impression that they could have parking pads in the right of way. This, of course, is not allowed and for a very good reason. These properties have been around for nearly a hundred years with no issues. Now, because of the impression given, we seem to have developed an issue. It seems that if it were a problem for the property owners, it would have developed prior to them purchasing the property. Now, we are looking into allowing right of way parking for limited properties throughout the city. This is going to create more issues that the city doesn't need. Our municipal code, like most cities around Florida, are pretty much the same as it pertains to off-street parking in residential districts. It is very restrictive and for a good reason. Even the parking on the private, private residential property has stringent rules for where, for where you can park your vehicles. Having less stringent rules for the right of way than you have for private property just doesn't make sense. It ain't broke, so let's not fix it.
Are there more comments on the YouTube? Is that, is that, are they actually saying that on YouTube or is that somebody reading that?
I, I have no idea, I assume that was Courtney reading, is that what that was?
Yes, sir, it was, that was the rest of, for the public comment, for that previous call that you just had.
Courtney, we, we can't hear, we heard very little of what you just said. So I don't know, I, I heard what you just said just now, you explained what you had been reading, but when you were reading, we, we heard very little of it. I don't know if it's our connection or if you were.
If, if the planning board will allow, I don't mind reading them again.
Just hold on a minute, okay, please. We'll print it, we'll print them right now and then they can be read in here and that way it'll be it.
Something, I mean, are we jumping around because we were, twenty dash three was first?
These are public comments.
Doesn't matter what they talk about.
They can talk about whatever they want to, but there's really nothing. That they're addressing other than an update on what's gonna happen in the future, but they're still entitled to talk, so.
Okay.
I thought I was getting seen off for a minute there. I appreciate you.
I'm about to make a comment for all, I'll say.
I was gonna say that for Mr. Holmes.
Okay, I mean, just don't wanna duplicate, but what, what's the bones? I mouse now. Alright, so you wanna read some of the ones that you've got already, but just don't wanna duplicate when Jonathan brings them in, right, okay?
Can I read the ones from Tony Harwell specifically?
Sure, identify who it's from and then you can read.
Um, I'm reading the public comments into the record from Mr. Tony Harwell, two fifteen Dodge Street. Mr. Harwell said, I believe that this change was prompted by the property owners in the South Historic District by giving the impression that they could have power parking pads in the R O W. This was during the new storm water system and the reconfiguration of the streets. This was during the new storm water system and the reconfiguration of the streets. The historic districts and other residential districts in town have all been functioning with no issues regarding the South Historic District. Parking was never a problem until someone was given the impression that they could have parking pads in the R O W. This, of course, is not allowing for very good reason. These properties have been around for nearly 100 years with no issues. Now, because of the impression given, we seem to have developed an issue. It seems that if it were a problem for the property owners, it would have developed prior to them purchasing the property. Now, we're looking into allowing the R O W parking for limited properties throughout the city. This is going to create more issues that the city doesn't need. Our municipal code, like most cities around Florida, are pretty much the same as it pertains to the off-street parking in residential districts. It is very restrictive and for a good reason. Even the parking on the private residential property has stringent rules for where you can park your vehicles. Off-street parking has occurred in the city since the invention of the automobile. The city has encouraged parking in the R O W and it is much preferred by most as opposed parking in the narrow street that makes it difficult to pull out of driveway." End of comment.
Okay. Have another one?
The next comment is from Roberta Correa. "As a 13-year resident of the South Historic District, I agree that the R O W parking is not warranted across the board and only should be approved on a case-by-case basis." End of comment.
Any others? Any others?
I don't see any at this time. Courtney, is there any more?
So what does R O W stand for?
Right of way.
Right, thank you.
Mr. Russo just made another com, I mean, Mr. Harwell, I'm sorry, made another comment. The folks commenting on this issue that are opposed to the off-street parking either do not live in Palatka, Pam Garrett, or continually park in the R O W themselves.
Any further comment? Okay, at this time I'm hearing no further comment. I close the public comment. And moving on to public hearings. Good case, PB case PB 20-30, request to annex approximately one acre property into the city, amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Reserve, U R, to the City of Palatka, R L, and rezone from Putnam County Agriculture to the City of Palatka, R 1A. The location is at 2702 Cecile Avenue, Palatka, Florida, 32177. I'm Kevin Herbert and Vicky Colbert. I'm looking at you now.
Hello, it's Veronica Fisher again. For the record, at the building and zoning department. The property that is reported today is basically requesting an annexation as well as a land use change. And you would see it's approximately an acre of land. It's north of Cecilia, east of Westover Drive and west of McDeven Street. And they are requesting to change the zoning of the property from residential. I apologize, from the land use, from urban services, which is in the county, to residential, which is the city's zoning designation. And also the land use going from agriculture to single family. The property is consistent with the zoning code as well as the policies in the comprehensive plan, so staff is recognized and approved.
Thank you. Is there anybody here that would want to speak to that?
I just have a question.
Come to the podium. Name and address, please?
I'm Herbert Colbert, 2702 Cecile Avenue. I was the one made the request. We just want to get tied into the city for sole purposes and so forth. Are there any restrictions that I need to know of? I mean, such as, I know it's not going from urban to the city, like gardening or anything like that, but are there any restrictions on what can and can't be done from the county to the city? Just for the record, because I really haven't had a garden before now. Just as I got old, all my siblings are starting to do, trading off with each other about each other, everybody's garden, and they say, "Why don't you do one?" And I said, "Well, I don't even know..."
This is a .36 acre parcel, right? This is a third of an acre?
Yeah, three quarters of an acre.
No, .36 is a little over a third.
A little over a third of an acre, what we're showing.
What we're showing, yeah.
So the only reason I asked the question was because I just, you're talking about a residential garden at your house, we have no provisions against that.
That's all it would be, trust me.
You don't plan on supplying public, huh?
No, no, just want to have, know if I'll be able to do something like that, not putting up any fences for cattle or anything like that, just want to make sure that I don't get myself locked in or something, I'm not sure.
So R 1 district is just primarily for residential, but a use like gardening is certainly an ancillary use that you wouldn't need any kind of permit for, anything of that nature. Now, you want to put a figure out there, that might be a different thing.
No.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak to this? If there's nobody else being here, hearing anybody else? Do we have any discussion?
Mr. Chair? Hi, this is Valeria Thomas. I think the planning director notified me, I think of a scrivener's error in this item, and it should not be an R L, it should be R 1 designation.
Zoning.
Is that true, Ms. Fisher?
Okay. So what do we need to do as far as, we don't need to do anything corrective, we're already in doing? Just to make sure that you correct it with what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or any discussion, the board?
None.
Here, none do I. Here is...
So you have three separate items that'll be on the city commission's agenda, Mr. Chairman. One would be the annexation, which is taking the property from the county into the city. The second would be the comprehensive plan, a modification or amendment to our comprehensive plan, because we're now taking in property that we didn't formally have. And then the third would be the zoning. So there'll be three separate items that'll be on the, on the agenda for the city commission. So if you agree that the property is susceptible annexation, and really, the only strict requirement of annexation is to be contiguous to property that's already in the city, which staff indicates it is. If you agree, as the gentleman had already indicated, that he's looking to annex primarily for the purpose of being able to connect the water and sewer. Of course, from the city's perspective, we're anxious to do whatever we can to make our boundaries more consistent. So where there's property like this that's on the fringe, the city's policy is generally in favor of recommending that. So the annexation will be the first question. Then the property is coming in under our comprehensive plan, which as you know, has a future land use element that sort of makes a map of how we think the property, the area should develop. It's coming in as residential, which is normally considered to be a unoffensive or non-offensive land use. It's not compared to, not saying that commercial industrial is offensive, but depending upon where it is, it can be not compatible to the adjoining area. But this is, he's asking to come in as residential, R 1, single family. And then, so the comprehensive plan will be amended for residential. Our comprehensive plan would be amended to have this parcel be shown as residential, and he's asking for the R 1 zoning, but three separate issues.
So we have to have three different motions?
I would suggest that.
And we always, like the annexation and the change in zoning, we use the annex again as that R 1A rather than do three. Don't we pick two? I'm just asking.
I think we could do it as two. Trying to think of the passing requirements at the ordinance level. I think there we do it as three, because I believe, but if your, if your recommendation is for the R 1 zoning and the annexation, then we'll make it work in terms of the way the ordinance is reading when they go in front of the city commission.
Ms. Thomas, do you have any idea how we need to make those motions?
Let's do three, just for simplicity.
I'm not hearing her.
I heard it more.
I'm sorry, my mic was muted. Yes, we need to make three separate recommendations for the, for each of the annexation, the future land use, and for, just getting right then, and comprehensive plan, so that we can move it forward. And then it'll be two hearings before the board on the city commission.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Thomas.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we just need to just start doing them one at a time?
Is there a motion? Is there a motion for the annex?
I will motion. I motion to approve the request to annex approximately the .36 acre property into the city.
There's, there's a...
Per staff's recommendation.
There's a motion and a second on table. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. For the future land, or the future land use process, do I hear a motion?
I motion, go ahead. I motion to amend the future land use map from Putnam County Urban Service to City of Palatka Residential. Per staff, per staff.
I'll second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion for the comp plan?
I'm sorry, sir, it's the rezoning.
Putnam County Agriculture.
I motion to go up to approve the rezoning from Putnam, from Putnam County, from Ag to City of Palatka Single Family District, R 1A, per staff's recommendations.
Motion and second on the table. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
And if you're growing tomatoes in that garden, I got a sample. Maybe peas and greens.
That's good enough.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to ordinances. Case PB 20-40, or 04, discussing regard, discussion regarding ordinance amending section 94-261 of the municipal code pertaining to the location of parking facilities for existing residential structures.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, Don Holmes, city manager, formerly city attorney, and let me, if I could, explain what this is and where we're going with this. Personally, the City of Palatka Code of Ordinances has two provisions that have become a topic of discussion. The first one is that you can't park in any front yard under our ordinances. The second is you can't park in the, it doesn't term it right of way, but it, it's talking about the right of way. It defines it as the area between the travelway of the street and the property line, which is right of way. You can't park there. So when the repaving of the, of some portions of the South Side Historic District began, and as the paving was in process, there were, it was obvious that some people were parking in the right of way, not in paved spots or in designated spots, but just in the right of way, because they had, they had no ability to get to the backyard, because they had a lot that was narrow enough with no side vacant area. They couldn't drive by their house to get to the backyard. Our ordinance prohibits parking in the front yard. So the only place they had to park was on the street or on the right of way. The streets in these areas were 16 feet wide, so if you had people parking in the street, some would say it was a safety issue. I don't consider myself a traffic engineer, but it certainly is at least an obstacle in a 16-foot wide roadway. So no good, this falls under the heading of no good deed goes unpunished. As the contractors were over there, there were three houses that fell into the category of having no side yard. You couldn't get by the house to get to the backyard, and they, and they had no driveway, and you can't park in the front yard. So it was thought that we might improve the area by allowing a single space parking that was aesthetically pleasing, either brick or concrete or something of that nature, single space in the right of way in front of just those houses, to give them someplace to park beside the street. In the course of that, in some fashion or another, a fourth house managed to get a pad forward, and it does have a garage, and it does have someplace for the, for vehicles to be parked, which set off calls, complaints from people in the South Side Historic District. So looking at the code, and this was not, this was not an issue that was brought to my attention before the complaints, it was after the complaints. But after looking at the code, I found the prohibition, prohibition against front yard parking and the prohibition against right of way parking. So my, my thought was, okay, look, personally, from a staff perspective, it wasn't something that I had a strong position on either way. I mean, I wasn't trying to advocate either side. But it sounded like a good policy matter, since there are a number of the people who objected to having any right of way parking in the South Side Historic District. There were no people who objected to that. My suggestion was, well, let's, let's draft an ordinance that makes it clear that you can't park in the right of way unless, because of the configuration of your lot, it's not possible for you to park in the backyard. You don't have a driveway, you don't have a garage, and then you can seek a variance, variance from the planning board after input from the historic preservation board. I was trying to cover all bases. But before we could even, I have that ordinance drafted, but before we could even get that far, then more issues arose in that, it was brought to my attention, somebody has requested the ability to pour a parking pad as sort of an addition to a driveway on River Street, on a property on River Street, from the Old Ford Furniture. I can't tell you the address, but it's from the Old Ford, near Tim Smith's old house. And my initial impression was, well, our ordinance says you can't park in the front yard, the driveway, but then it was brought to my attention that the adjoining house has a parking area in the front yard. So at that point, it became clear to me that this thing just needed to be vetted some. As I said, I don't, it is not, I don't have a house or property in the historic district. I have no strong feeling one way or the other. From the calls I've gotten, I will tell you that there are people who have strong feelings both ways, on both sides of the, of the issue. So all we were doing, all, it was my intent today to do was to say, this is going to come to you soon, but I'm going to take it to the historic preservation board first. We're going to take it to the historic preservation board first and let them weigh in. And then after they weigh in, we're going to bring it to you.
All right, so I'm muted, now what?
Is that you, Jonathan?
Well, let's mute all of the callers right now, okay? Then after the historic preservation board, and you have weighed in with recommendation, I'm gonna, we're gonna put it in front of the city commission, and whatever the legislators decide will be the way, the way it goes. So that's, that's all today was about, about us, we're not asking you to vote on anything, you can be thinking about it. But as this issue has grown, it became apparent to me, I spoke with Jonathan just this week and said, "Look, I think maybe the best thing for us to do is just let them vet it at the historic preservation board first, and then bring it to the planning commission, and then city commission can make a decision." That's where, that's where we are, so.
Was that additional one, was it permitted?
The one that's already in place.
You got, you said there was one down near Tim's old house.
It's old, and I don't know. I mean, I don't know when it was put in, I don't know if it was done by way of a permit, I have no idea. It's just that the new one did seek permission. The new person did seek permission to, and you know what I'm talking about when I say there's a driveway leading to a garage area, and they wanted to add a side path where they could park. Well, technically, that's parking in the front yard. So my initial impression was, well, that's parking in the front yard, and then they said, "Yeah, but..." And then they said, yeah, but the house right next to it has exactly that. So it's obvious that there's been, you know, and then, there's, there's not, I don't know that there's been a consistent policy applied in the past. So I don't want to, you know, it's, I think it's something that the board should, should, sorry to take your time with it, but I think that's the simplest and the most fair thing for us to do is let the boards that are, that are weighing in on these topics say what they had to say, and then we could go in whatever direction you'd like. But it was never our intent to simply allow carte blanche, carte blanche, the parking in the right of way. But we did think, and I'll admit that this was part of my thought, I thought that a bricked, once, a single space bricked turnoff into the right of way in limited circumstances with a variance from the planning board, which could consider all factors, you know, where it is, what's around it, that kind of thing, sounded like it was a decent idea, but it doesn't sound like a decent idea to everybody, obviously, so. So that's where, that's where we are.
Don't, don't you think the Historic Board is going to hash it out before it ever gets to us?
Well, but you're the ones that have the, the duty to make a recommendation to the commission technically, and they, we're talking about an ordinance change. It involves a land use, in my opinion, it involves change to the land use codes. So I think that you have, you know, I think under our code, it's, it's your, it's your, it's your privilege and responsibility to make a recommendation. If you just decide that whatever the Historic Preservation Board decided was what you want to do, then, as I said, I have no, I have no strong feelings about this one way or the other from a practical perspective. I mean, I understand if you go back 100 years, they didn't have them, but 100 years ago, they had horses walking up and down the street. So, you know, we have cars now, some of the cars, especially if you've got a truck, it's a little bit wide. My fault was just nighttime rain, you got somebody opening their door into a lane of traffic on a 16-foot wide street. I thought there was a potential safety issue there, but, you know.
Are, are all the streets on the South Side Historic District 16 feet wide? The ones that have been repaved?
Honestly, I can't, I can't tell you that.
The ones that have been repaved are varying width, you know, curb to curb, are varying widths.
Now, when they repaved them, they redid the curbs?
Yeah, in most cases. I mean, they're, you know, everything's kind of hodgepodge. But, yeah, Jonathan, they, they basically redid the curbs, and they're varying widths. Like, some of them are quite wide. But the old brick streets, where you had the granite curb and granite curb and the bricks, they were approximately 16 feet, you know, too, enough for two Model As to go by.
So.
Part of, part of living in a downtown historic district is the charm of not having, you know, above a truck in the front yard, you know, and, and not having it pulled up halfway on the sidewalk. It's the charm of looking at the historic houses. People put a lot of money to live downtown.
From a real estate perspective.
From the real estate, yeah.
But you don't, but you gotta have a place to park.
You do have to have a place to park, so.
Where I, where I live, you've got restrictions. You can't, you can't park a car during, during business hours, you can park one in the driveway. Otherwise, you put it in the garage, you know. That's just the way it's done, and you don't park them in the front yard, or somebody will probably burn them or steal them. We don't like them all over the front yard.
I have a.
Who was that?
Do we not have the ability to mute?
Every, every time I mute, he unmutes himself.
Earl, it sounded like you said, damn. Earl, I mean, y'all were, I think y'all, the only ones here today, besides you being the attorney, when we did the bed and breakfast and did the.
Same thing.
The special parking there, do y'all remember how we did that?
I, I don't, but I know it's compatible, it's, it's brick pavers. I look, it fits in with the place very well, and, you know. I've never even thought of that.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
And it looks attractive, you're just, you know.
Mr. Holmes, your suggestion was to let the Historic District come up with the verdicts correctly, and then we either approved them, I, or.
Well, it seems like there's three trains of thought right now. One is, don't let them park, if they don't have a driveway that goes to a garage, they got to park on the street. That's, that's the, that's one train of thought, no exception. So you may not have above a truck in the front yard, but you got above a truck in the street in front of the front yard, and that's, that's, that is what it is. Because if, if, it's just not realistic to think that people are going to park three blocks away and walk home. You can fake that if you want to, but it's not realistic. That's one school of thought. One school of thought is, in general, prohibit it, but where the construction, location, and site plan of the home makes it impossible to get to the backyard, and there is no garage on the house, then rather than park in the front yard on the street, let them have a single space parking pad with the aesthetics of it being approved by the Historic Preservation Board. That was what my ordinance had. But it was only going to be for those properties that had no ability to access a garage or the backyard.
That hardship was created back in 1800.
Exactly, it's not something they did yesterday, that was my thinking of it anyway. And then the last train of thought is, let anybody who wants to park in the right of way, and let them put paths there if they want to, those are the three. So the, I, the ordinance I had drafted was the middle approach. But as I said, you, we have found quickly that there are people who, who are on both of the ends, you know. Let anybody park there who wants to, in the right of way, wherever they want to, or don't let anybody park in the right of way or the yard, make anybody park on the street that's there. So because of that, because it was obviously we were going to offend somebody, no matter what, I said, I, I thought the best to let the boards that were comprised, let them hear it out, make a recommendation. As I said, from a staff perspective, I have no, I have no strong preference. I mean, it's, it was.
Everybody out there didn't just buy a car. They've been taking care of it on a very agreeable basis between them all, and now.
I mean, if they've, if they've got a pool of permit to, you know, and if it falls under, I can't pull in the backyard, I can't pull in my garage, I don't have a driveway, my house wasn't built with a garage, then I think it should be an option and have it to, you know, historically appealing, like, you know, the bed and breakfast did a nice job on theirs.
Yeah. Our naive thought was, a nice aesthetically attractive, single spot for parking was preferable to what was happening, which was just driving over the curb and parking in the right of way it was happening. But again, I don't really care. I, I, when I say I don't care, all I care about is that we do it the right way and it's done fairly. So that's why I thought that, let, let the HPP hear it first, and then let you guys hear it, and I'll make a recommendation. Whatever the commission decides, I'm good with, we'll, we'll apply it.
When it goes to the Historical Board, you know, for them to hash it out, they need to look at agreements between adjoining owners to get a common when going into the backyard, and that would take care of a lot of it.
Earl, how long have you, have you long, how long have you dealt with adjoining property owners? Yeah, well, I don't know what your experience has been, but I don't always find adjoining property owners to be agreeable. So. I do. So that's what it's all, it was just meant to let you guys know something was coming down the pipe. That's all, at one point, where I think we did, I and I, we thought we could put this in front of you guys. The calls started coming in, and I said, okay, let's just, let's, let's vet it all the way through.
Well, mine, I'm a little interested to know whether these properties are rental property, because that's where a lot of the times you get in the problems, because they don't care. You know, they're just renting, and they're going to just park, that's what I find, you know.
Is a decision being made today, though?
No, 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 that's.
No, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted.
At this point, I'd like to hear from some of the people that own property, that pay taxes in this area aesthetically, you know.
That's why I said I wanted to fully vet it, and, yeah.
Do you have to do a date from that historical board's notice?
We're going to, if I, I believe that what we have done is tried to schedule one in the first part of December, or a special, we discussed the other day. A special call meeting of the Historic Preservation Board in the first part of December, and, and have it agendaed, have it on the, you know, have it noticed, have it.
Can we have an email to the board members?
Sure.
So we can attend and listen?
Absolutely.
We're allowed individually.
Yeah, yeah, we shouldn't go as a group.
Bring us back lunch.
You're not supposed to talk, you're not supposed to confer or discuss, but sure, there's nothing that prohibits you from attending.
Come and listen.
Yeah, because, you know, somewhere back years ago, it got so restrictive here. We, when we replied to our emails saying, or you will be at the meeting at such and such a date, you couldn't reply all, so everybody knew.
Well, that's, that's still what the guidelines from Tallahassee tell us, that you should never reply all, because that's considered a communication outside the sunshine.
But we're okay to all good.
You're not communicating there, or, I mean, there's nothing that says you can't listen.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes.
Okay, we'll move on now to administrative reports. I get no opportunity to speak here. Mr. Russo, this is, this is just a, was just a informative type thing to us. There is no, there, there's nothing really to speak on. Well, normally, I would have a little yellow card, I could speak to the issue. We had, we already did the public speaking at the beginning. Ms. Thomas, would you rule on that for me, please?
Yes, sir, I agree with you, Mr. Killer Brew. Mr. Russo, you will be given an opportunity, and as the manager said, we're going to schedule this before the Historic Preservation Board. You will have an opportunity to appear there and to give your comments. We've also read your comments that you put in the chat into the record. So you have had an opportunity to speak, and Mr. Killer, you can proceed.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
The woman tell for Ms. Thomas? Is that a new attorney?
Yes.
He just, did he say former attorney, or current city?
He's a current city manager, former attorney.
Got it.
Ms. Thomas is our current.
She just spoke as our current.
Right. City attorney.
Yeah.
Right.
Donna's the manager. Donna's the manager, yes.
We got that confusion straightened out.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, again, we've got administrative reports, is there any? None at this time? This time, okay. Seeing nothing else on the agenda, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
So move.